Thank you.
Neil, can I have your chair?
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to speak then?
I don't know. I'll just say...
Do you want to do this?
Yeah.
Do this.
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, right here?
Right.
One, two. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks for the buckets.
So as we pass those out, they have a seat. There's two more groups of individuals involved in this that we want to thank.
So there's two other groups of individuals that I think are absolutely critical for us to thank and recognize for their commitment and service during this incident. First is our own Department of Public Safety here in Montgomery County. And I'm glad Brian calls to order with the pledge. And I just want to thank him for his tremendous leadership, many years in the county and now in the role of leading the department. Which includes our Hazmat Materials Response Team, which worked with local authorities to monitor air quality on-site in the surrounding neighborhoods. Let me give special recognition to Brandon Purcell, our Hazmat Team Chief, who has done a tremendous job, who's here with us today. Thank you, Brandon. Our emergency operations communications staff supported ongoing public communications during the week of the fire, which at a time when people are very concerned about whether it could spread, whether there's contamination in air and water, communicating with them is critical. And Todd Stierlitz, our Deputy Director of Public Affairs, is here. Todd, I want to thank Todd and give him special recognition because when I was thinking of the county employees who were also firefighters, who responded to the fire and then came back to work, I was thinking of him. So Todd showed up a few hours later to help run our emergency response in terms of communications after actually having been at the fire. So thank you, Todd, for your service. And of course, our Director, Brian mentioned. In particular, I should also mention that there were several other volunteers who had day jobs in the Department of Safety. And some of them are confirmed here, including Amber Gwening. Is Amber here? Thank you, Amber. Nolan Hughes is here, Nolan. Chase McSavage, Liam Ramsey, I think they're here right now. And Jansen Shah, Jansen, thank you. So each of you has played such a critical role. And many of our part-time county staff are also first responders on our Hazmat Team, our Urban Search and Rescue Teams who responded. And that includes Michael Eller, Thomas Hamel, John Lahan, Robert Staley, and Robert Woodward. And Montgomery County is just so thankful to have such a dedicated team of public safety professionals who help train all of the volunteers who come through our training center and are just a critical part of the response. So I want to invite all of our DPS staff, who I mentioned and others, to come up to be recognized.
First, those who led the effort locally. I'll mention each of them and then we'll all come up together for recognition and a commendation. The lead fire company for addressing the fire was the Weldon Fire Company. And many of the members of the fire company are here today. I know Jonathan Gerhardt, Deputy Chief, is here. Chief Keith Maslin, that's of the Weldon Fire Company, as well as several of their volunteers. Of the Abington Township Fire Department, Christopher Platts, Fire Marshal. Tom McInnany, Director of Fire EMS Services, is here. And from the Abington Police Department, Chief Mike Jones, who's also a member of the Abington Fire Company. Chief Ken Lynch is also a member of the Jenkentown Fire Department. Deputy Chief Ed Quinn. The Abington Township Manager, Christopher Crispin, is here. The Second Alarmist Rescue Squad is here as well. They're an EMS squad serving Eastern Monaco, including their chief, Jonathan Plank. And just some of the mutual aid companies that responded to the fire have representatives here today, including Abington Fire Company, Landside Fire Company, Edgnell Fire Company, Orland Fire Company, Jenkentown Fire Company, McKinley Fire Company, Elton's Park Fire Company, and Roslyn Fire Company. Again, that's just some of the groups that responded and those who are closest to where the fire was, but there were 80 fire companies altogether. And I want to say that these men and women who came to Abington to fight the fire that night and in the subsequent days, they're all volunteers, for those of you who don't know how we respond to emergencies in our county and really across the Commonwealth, which you'll hear some individual stories I'll mention, but these are people who have jobs, like many of you in the county, in fact, many work in the county, and were up until 5:00 AM that first night, went back home and came back to work in their day jobs. So it's an inspiring display of commitment to members of our community and an inspiring display of commitment to public service. And while they don't get paid for it, we at the county, as you reminded me, have done some things that we can do to support our EMS and fire companies, which I'm very proud to share. The first vote that we took as a board when we all collectively came into office was to provide 100% county property tax rebate for all of our fire EMS workers and hope many other municipalities will follow suit for their school taxes. But it's an incredibly important role for us in public service to find ways to support our first responders, the heroes who put themselves at risk on the sake of our entire community, and we as a board are committed to that. I appreciate that. But more so than us, you know, we have to, we're here today to recognize those who put themselves at risk. And I wanted to say, to have the largest fire essentially in the history of Montgomery County that we're aware of, and to have that occur and require the level of response that it did, and not have a single mortality or serious injury is a tremendous testament to our first responders, our firefighters, their training, their capability, and their commitment. So please give them all a round of applause. And I'm going to ask all of you from the fire companies to come up for a photo and to receive a commendation. On behalf of all the residents of Montgomery County, thank you for your service. It's going to be crowded right here, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So as we pass those out, they have a seat. There's two more groups of individuals involved in this that we want to thank. So there's two other groups of individuals that I think are absolutely critical for us to thank and recognize for their commitment and service during this incident. First is our own Department of Public Safety here in Montgomery County. And Brian calls to order with the pledge, and I just want to thank him for his tremendous leadership, many years in the county and now in the role leading the department, which includes our Hazmat Materials Response Team, which worked with local authorities to monitor air quality on site in the surrounding neighborhoods. Let me give special recognition to Brandon Purcell, our Hazmat Team Chief, who has done a tremendous job, who's here with us today. Thank you, Brandon. Our emergency operations communications staff supported ongoing public communications during the week of the fire, which at a time when people are very concerned about whether it could spread, whether there's contamination in air and water, communicating with them is critical. And Todd Stierlitz, our Deputy Director of Public Affairs, is here. Todd, I want to thank Todd and give him special recognition because when I was thinking of the county employees who were also firefighters, who responded to the fire and then came back to work, I was thinking of him. So Todd showed up a few hours later to help run our emergency response in terms of communications after actually having been at the fire. So thank you, Todd, for your service. And of course, our Director, Brian, I mentioned. In particular, I should also mention that there were several other volunteers who had day jobs in the Department of Safety, and some of them are confirmed here, including Amber Gwening. Is Amber here? Thank you, Amber. Nolan Hughes is here, Nolan. Chase McSavage, Liam Ramsey, I think they're here right now. Jansen Shah. Jansen, thank you. So each of you has played such a critical role. And many of our part-time county staff are also first responders on our Hazmat Team, our Urban Search and Rescue Teams who responded. And that includes Michael Eller, Thomas Hamel, John Lahan, Robert Staley, and Robert Woodward. And Montgomery County is just so thankful to have such a dedicated team of public safety professionals who help train all of the volunteers who come through our training center and are just a critical part of the response. So I want to invite all of our DPS staff, who I mentioned and others, to come up to be recognized. One more, last but not the least. So those of you familiar with the story of what was happening the night the fire broke out and in the subsequent days, you know, they're very close to the site of SBS Technologies is the Highland Restaurant and Bar. And the owners, Dan and Chelsea Katz, are you here today? I think you're here, Dan and Chelsea, standing in the back. So it started when a few of the firefighters, I believe, were on shift and just needed a place to go to the bathroom and went into the restaurant. And perhaps it became a slippery slope when you said yes, because then they asked you, can we use this as a command center? But the Highland Restaurant and Bar is a place that began serving food to the first responders and really served as the home base for everyone who was volunteering and, as we said, with their lives at risk and at a very difficult time, needed a warm place to stay and a place to plan how they were going to tackle what was happening. So I just think it's incredible to have members of the community and neighbors who are there to discern in the way that you could. And Dan and Chelsea are Cheltenham High graduates, who've been deeply rooted in the community for a long time. And, you know, by recognizing them, they're also a symbol for all of those members of the community who stood up and stepped up in ways that they could, including volunteers that write across, volunteers at the high school who are ready to shelter, individuals who were displaced from their homes, friends and family who house people who had to evacuate through a very scary time when, you know, they couldn't get their kids to school and people's lives were disrupted. So I want to thank Dan and Chelsea for being model citizens and providing the support for our first responders that, again, set a great example for many members of our community. So please give them a round of applause. Final note on SBS, which is that I'd like to point out Steve Forster, Steve, are you here today? Steve, many of you have seen Steve, he's not our defined, he's the tallest one in the room all the time, but he's our Director of Commerce. Steve has been in daily contact with SBS and with the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry's Rapid Response Team. We're looking to support the 500 employees whose lives have been appended by the fire, and we're going to work to make sure that their jobs can stay in Montgomery County and advocate to do whatever we can, whether it's finding a new site and location, or working on finding them other companies that they can apply their skills to. So we are absolutely committed to the community, the employees, and ensuring that we as a county do everything we can to get people back on their feet. So thank you, Steve, for all of your work. Please give him a round of applause. So next up, measles. Thank you all again. Please give them a final round of applause. So give them a moment. So I'd like to provide an update on the case of measles, which occurred in an unvaccinated child identified in Montgomery County over this weekend. It was the first case of measles in Pennsylvania, at least recently. And our Department of Public Health, our Office of Public Health and our Department of Health and Human Services, our disease investigators acted very quickly to conduct contact tracing. Identified individuals were contacted and notified of potential exposure to measles and assessed for vaccination status and risk of infection. I want to commend our staff that worked very quickly to trace and contain the case. They worked closely with the Pennsylvania Department of Health in circumstances where multiple state jurisdictions are in play, which is common in epidemiology. Working quickly is of the utmost importance when it comes to public health and contact tracing and potential epidemics. The CDC also plays a very critical role in these situations because the windows of time and response are very narrow. Measles in particular is an incredibly contagious disease. It can linger for hours. It can be spread before someone, of course, knows that they have measles, most clearly identified by a rash, but the symptoms can also include symptoms that are more in line with COVID or runny nose before the rash appears. So it's incredibly important that we get the right information out there about measles. And of course, the most important thing is that we maintain herd immunity, which in Montgomery County we have. So when it comes to children entering kindergarten, we have over 95% of kindergartners that are vaccinated with the MMR vaccine measles, which is critical at reducing the spread and preventing a potential outbreak. And if you'll see in Texas, where there's a significant outbreak of over 159 cases and one child has died, and that's the first death of measles in a decade in the United States, it was in a place where only 82% of people were vaccinated, and so there was much further spread of the virus. So it's absolutely critical that we work to get the facts out there for our community and that we encourage everyone to please speak to your physician or your child pediatrician about getting vaccinated, because, you know, while it is an individual choice, actions, do affect the overall community and can save your town from being hospitalized due to measles. And about 20% of children, young children who contract measles will be hospitalized. It's very serious, and we want to encourage everyone to continue speaking with their healthcare professionals about vaccinations. And many people are concerned about cuts at the CDC, and I would just take this moment to recognize that while there are efficiencies that can be had in every level of government, there are significant layoffs happening at the CDC right now. What's more inefficient is if local health departments have to compensate for the expertise that can otherwise be centralized and shared nationally. So we rely daily, our public health department relies daily on CDC for expertise. We don't have the funds to hire environmental toxicologists or experts at specific diseases, and neither do a lot of charities around the country. So we're going to stay tuned on what's happening at the CDC and try to shift accordingly to make sure that we can still deliver and serve our residents on these issues. Finally, for my final comment on a similar note, we spoke earlier this week on HUD funding, and there's significant layoffs also happening at the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And specifically in our county, there's about $5 million that were allocated as part of a competitive grant program called the Continuum of Care Funding. And our county's program, We're Way Home, to help people off the streets, is affected by that. So Laurel House is the shelter that many of you may know, domestic violence-focused shelter for, often for women who are fleeing domestic violence. They have a grant for six figures plus that we have not heard anything from the Department of Housing and Urban Development on whether or not that funding is coming or not. That's the first time in decades when we haven't heard about these sources of funding, about $5 million in total to nine different nonprofits in Montgomery County, as well as our Department of Housing here. So we're going to work to make sure that we serve all of the people who need those critical services, whether it's survivors of domestic violence, whether it's veterans who are overrepresented in the population of those who are unhoused. We're going to maintain our commitment to our residents, but it's going to be hard if we don't have the authority on federal funding. So I would encourage everyone to reach out to their members of Congress and leaders in our federal delegations to advocate for those funds that are coming to Montgomery County and, of course, the rest of the Commonwealth. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Wynder.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing well? Good. So I know our first responders have left and our public safety team has left, but I just want to publicly thank them for their leadership in such a tragedy in Abington Township. You know, what we saw this morning is what's the best of Montgomery County, a community coming together. You saw the Highland, you saw our public safety team, you saw our first responders coming together to support the community. So I want to just thank them all for taking the time to come here so we could just honor them in a small way. So you've heard about some of our great employees and our public safety team, who are local heroes, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge all Montgomery County employees. Tomorrow, March 7th, is Employee Appreciation Day. And our skilled and dedicated staff keep our community going in so many ways. Our employees design, plan, and build infrastructure projects like roads, bridges, and trails, and other facilities used by hundreds of our residents daily. They also work hard to maintain and conserve our historic sites, parks, and trails, and they host countless education programs for the public almost every week of the year. Our employees also connect with our most vulnerable friends and neighbors with the assistance that they need, whether it's affordable childcare, senior services, benefit assistance, public health programs, career development, and so much more. Our staff works so hard to attract new businesses and help establish new ones. We hear about our great Commerce Department, to find new space and to create resources and financings so that those businesses can thrive. Our team also works to protect the public, help people navigate the justice system, and help with civil-related issues, whether it's getting married or going through an adoption process. I also don't want to forget our dedicated employees who keep our buildings maintained. I get to see them when I come into work and when I leave work. They keep our offices clean and tidy and oftentimes are not doing that work that we don't oftentimes take a moment to thank them for. There are so many great employees in Montgomery County. We have 2,800-plus employees. And I took a moment yesterday, we gave all employees chocolate-covered pretzels. So we delivered them to all of our county buildings with a thank you card from the commissioners to just say thank you. Chocolate-covered pretzels don't really, you know, celebrate the work that they all do, but it was just a gesture to say, say thank you. So I got to go to see our Commerce Department, our Early Learning Center, which our Director is here, as well as our Office of Children and Youth. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our county employees for the work that you do day in and day out to make Montgomery County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Next up, Saturday is March 8th, is International Women's Day, wearing pink in celebration of Women's History Month. This has been internationally recognized by the United Nations since the 1970s, although the movement dates back to 1911, which is a time before women were first elected to Congress in 1916, before the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote in 1920, before the first no-fault divorce laws allowing divorce by mutual consent in 1969, or Roe v. Wade in 1973, before the Pregnancy Discrimination Act in 1978, and before FMLA in 1993. International Women's Day celebrates the achievements of women, whether social, cultural, political, or economic. And for Women's History Month, we invited Montgomery County staff to nominate inspirational coworkers to be recognized. So today, we are proud to recognize Julie Klein-Gumther, Deputy Administrator of the Early Learning Resource Center. Julie's leadership has been instrumental in ensuring that our Early Learning Resource Center not only meets but exceeds the compliance standards. In the temporary absence of a Director, Julie stepped up without hesitation. She leaned into the opportunity with strength and commitment to excellence. Julie led the team through an annual performance honoring, and I'm told she is the backbone of Region 17. So let's welcome Julie up, and let's honor and celebrate her for Women's History Month. And we'll be recognizing more employees at the next board meeting on March 20th. I'd like to also welcome a new member of our senior leadership team here at the county, our new Chief Human Resources Officer, Anthony, or Tony, Brew. Tony, could you stand up so everybody can... Anthony joins Monaco with more than two decades of experience leading employee engagement and talent management in large organizations in Philadelphia and Montgomery County. Anthony's work includes a commitment to inclusivity and fostering workplace environments where employees feel empowered to thrive and innovate. He has a track record of broadening diversity, improving retention, and producing award-winning results. His company that he came from was recognized by Forbes and other industry leaders. We are so pleased to invite Anthony, and I'm going to decide whether I'll call you Anthony or Tony, I haven't decided yet, but Anthony, we're so excited to have you on our county team. And last but not least, I want to acknowledge Ramadan, the Islamic month fasting, prayer, and reflection that began last week. We wish our Muslim neighbors who are observing a peaceful and spiritual holy month. Additionally, Tuesday was Additionally, Tuesday was Fasnat Day, or Mardi Gras, and Max and I, my son, for those that don't know Max, went and we got some fasnuts. Am I saying that right? Fasnuts, fasnuts, right? So we had that special treat. We shared it with my dad, and we went to Suzie Joe's Donut. So they had a national donut day. So for those that are observing Lent, you know, yesterday was Ash Wednesday, we wish you a blessed and reflective month. And this is a sacred time for many friends and neighbors in our community of all different faiths. So let this be a reminder of what unites us in greater... What I'm trying to say is, let's remind us that our faith and our differences really unite us and shouldn't divide us. And so wishing you all peace during the Lenten season, during Ramadan. That's it for me.
All right. Good morning. Unfortunately, our first responders left, because one of the things I wanted to talk about was, a lot of the crew that was here this morning, a lot of the crew that was here this morning, what people don't know was that they were first on site. And what they did was, they got a report, or they came over the radio that there might have been, or could have been 60-plus people that were still trapped inside during the fire. And they showed up on scene, they rushed right in, not hesitating, to ensure that all of the employees that were inside were able to get out. So they basically got in there, set up a barrier call between them and the fire, I mean, between employees and the fire, to ensure that all employees could get out safely before continuing on and waiting for secondary, third, and so on responders to show up. So that's just incredible in itself, that they charged right in, not even hesitation for the staff. The other thing I want to point out is that, you know, we talked about that they were able to save a good portion of the building, as well as there was no secondary fires with the houses that were basically right across the street from burning ambers or anything like that. They do, I mean, they train rigorously. I mean, the fire departments, they put an enormous amount of time into training. But they also do and run drills with the staff, SPS has their own fire brigade, and they do a lot of training with SPS as well. So it wasn't by accident that no one was injured or no one was killed or anything during that fire. A lot of prep went in to ensure that if anything ever did happen on site, they were well-prepared. And I'll tell you, when I was over there to see not only the first responders that got there when the call first came in, but all of the fire departments that showed up, and as mentioned, there were 65-plus apparatuses, and watching them all work in unity, and how they broke down, you know, who was responsible for what portion of the building, I mean, it was just incredible to see. And as mentioned, to see our staff and our emergency management team there and the command center that was set up, it was just phenomenal. And, you know, as Montgomery County residents, we are in really good hands with all our volunteers and all our staff here at the county as well. To know that, and I mentioned this, that, you know, we hear a lot about when there's a big fire in the county, but this goes on daily. There's fires throughout Montgomery County, probably at least every day or every other day, somewhere in the county, big or small, and they're there within minutes. So again, I want to thank them for their courage, their dedication, and they're just heroes, I mean, they are heroes. So unfortunately, we were able to escape out. But also, we also, an announcement to make is, we have a prime street bridge, we've talked about it, it's a bridge that's been up in Pottstown, it's been closed for 12, somewhere between 12 and 13 years. I think it was 2009 or 2010 when the bridge actually closed. We're actually, groundbreaking construction has started, or construction has started, but we are going up on March 10th, do groundbreaking, and at 1 o'clock, we'll start properly at 1 o'clock. We invited the federal state and local officials to come out, and we hope to see a big crowd, because I know the people in Pottstown, and even across the bridge in the east Coventry area in Chester County are really excited, because this bridge is a connection point between Montgomery County and Chester County at that right near Pottstown. The bridge was built, actually, it was built in 1935, so it is, there's a lot of historic parts to it. Like I said, it crosses over the Schuylkill River, and we, I believe it's going to be just a few years for us to complete the project, and I know we'll be back when they're done to celebrate the bridge appropriately. March is Irish-American Heritage Month. March, I'm sure everyone knows, but March 17th is St. Patrick's Day. Irish-Americans have been a huge part of Pennsylvania's history, and especially here in the southeast. Many Irish fought in the Revolutionary War, including the Battle of White Marsh and White Marsh Township. Navy Captain John Barry was famously the father of the American Navy. And the first St. Patrick's Day parade was in Philadelphia in 1771. So here in Montgomery County will be the Concha Hockin Day Parade, which began in 2006. The parade is at March 17th on Lafayette Street in Concha Hockin. And the weather is nice, there's tens of thousands of people that show up for that parade, so it's a fun time, so we hope to see you out there. And actually, March 8th, this weekend, is the first annual Glen Side Parade, so they are going to be celebrating St. Patrick's Day as well. And I'm sure we'll see a lot of our firefighters and first responders that we saw here today will be in that parade as well. Commissioner McKeever brought up about the HUD funding over the last week. I've been in contact with Congressman Fitzpatrick's office and Senator David McCormick's office, and I'm actually talking with them as well. And we're sifting through what some of the changes that are occurring in HUD, and we're working diligently to see when that money will be released so that we could get it assigned appropriately to those nonprofits. So, you know, as county commissioners, we work very hard for Montgomery County, and our duty is to reach out to state or federal elected officials when necessary to support what needs to happen here in Montgomery County. And that's a lot of what I spent my time this week, talking with representatives down in Washington. We know that, we mentioned, we talked about the measles outbreak. It's not unreal, it's pretty normal every year that there's some outbreak. It's not really an outbreak, there's measles that have been reported throughout the United States. The one case that we had in Montgomery County, yes, it was true that it was an unvaccinated child, but there's a little bit more detail, I'm not going to specifically say where that child came from, but that child did fly into the United States, and then they eventually worked their way into Philadelphia Airport to Montgomery County. So there are countries in the world that don't have the same vaccination protocols that we have here in Pennsylvania or in the United States. But we do want to support families and support their decisions that they make. And unfortunately, the child in Texas that did die, there's a lot of other conditions that were part of that situation, so we don't want to give up. We don't want people to think that kids are, anybody that's been diagnosed with measles or been reported diagnosed with measles has died. But we don't want to see anybody get sick, we don't want to see anybody have measles, we don't want to see anybody pass that on to anyone else. But we will have all the staff and everyone throughout the United States that are on top of it and working diligently to ensure that it doesn't go any further than it's been, it's similar to the previous years. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will move on to a presentation from our friends at Valley Forge Tourism Convention Please welcome Mike Oment, who many of you may know well, I think, to the great soul of my children as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. It is great to be here today. Thank you for having us, it was a pleasure. We're going to give you a quick update on where we finished the year, where our momentum is, what we're doing right now, some really, really cool data we're going to hear. We're going to come back to the Commissioners in a few weeks to talk about America 250. So we'll touch on America 250 a little bit today from the high end standpoint. Quick video to start out with. Real serious. our marketing and our sales team. You're going to hear quite a bit about youth sports and what's happening economically to the county. It's just a great story. A few stats to go through real quick. So $2.4 billion in tourism and economic impact in Montgomery County in 2024. We see this number only getting bigger. We have just really, really cool momentum. $1.7 billion visitor spend alone in Montgomery County. 40,000 jobs created to tourism, hospitality, and attractions. Again, we see that number spiking. $286 million in hotel revenue alone we finished with in '24. We see that number going up. And keep in mind, we have close to 10,000 rooms, 9,500 in Montgomery County. We have twice the amount of supply levels in other counties. We're going to see an additional 1 million visitors to the region in 2026. We will never experience this in our lifetime again, what's coming our way. Our team right now, you're going to hear where they're at, is traveling over 300,000 miles this year alone for sales to attract business into Montgomery County. Lisa Carl and her team are just doing an incredible job. In fact, one of our staff members right now is in Berlin. John, who you're going to hear from in a few minutes, he's headed to London in a few days for sports, believe it or not, youth sports from London, they want to come over here. May is going to be insane here with business. May, we're going to look at the forecast, from a strategic standpoint, our hotel occupancy, our revenue is through the roof, it'll be a record May. A lot of that has to do with the truce, golf event, which is coming, the cricket, and youth sports and leisure business. We're seeing a major uptick in leisure business on the weekends. Rachel's team had over, what happened? What happened? I got a flashlight the last time I was here, I just started shaking. 2 million views alone on our website, and we're in the process of rebuilding our website. We have over $250,000. Over 4,000 stories alone were generated from Rachel and her team this past year with our communications team. We're going to be giving to Valley Forge, to Stark National Park, thank you Commissioner Wynder, you were with us last year, a check this year for probably a little more than $90,000. So you're going to hear about that for the rev run. Our team, social marketing and Rachel, have raised over 400,000 pounds of food for freedom from hunger, and we only see that getting stronger. So I'm going to pass it over to Jake Markison. Again, thanks for having us, I'll come up at the end for any questions.
Good morning, thank you, Mike, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm really excited to share how the hospitality and tourism industry continues to grow here in Montgomery County. Our most recent numbers are stronger than ever and actually have surpassed 2019 levels, which is really considered the benchmark. As Mike alluded to, total economic impact in Montgomery County in the prior year was $2.4 billion, which is actually a 4% growth over the prior year. Total tourism spend is $1.7 billion. That grew 7% year over year. And all of this fuels more than 40,000 hospitality jobs. You can go to the next slide. Digging in a little bit deeper, we continuously use data from a handful of organizations such as Tourism Economics and Smith Travel Research. Both of those entities measure the hospitality, the strength of the hospitality industry. In 2024, Monaco led the region, the suburban region, with an average daily rate of $132. This signals a very strong market demand. In 20, excuse me, the county also added 1.6% in additional supply, so that's additional rooms. It was the only county to add supply in 2024. The county sold more than 2 million rooms in 2024, which led the region again at a growth of more than 5%. And lastly, we finished the year at a revenue total of $277 million, which is a 4% growth year over year. I want to point out that the number that Mike mentioned earlier on, the 286 million, is the forecasted number for 2025. The growth, or the number for 2024 was 2.77. Again, we're looking at about approximately a 3% to 4% growth year over year. You can go to the next slide. So on this slide, you can see how Montgomery County matches up to other counties. You can see that we're leading, obviously, in hotel revenue. We're leading in growth year over year. And on the right side, I want to point out that you have the room tax numbers there at the bottom. Montgomery County is the lowest in the region at 4%. We have about 9,500 hotel rooms in the county. And an interesting metric for DMOs, which is Destination Marketing Organizations, is that you want about $1,000 in marketing spend for each hotel room. That's basically right where we are. So 90, like about, you know, that would be translated about $9.5 million to market. And as what we are, we are an extension of the sales team for hotels, okay? So our sales team goes out on the road, they can sell the area, and as an extension of the sales teams without, obviously, the overhead and the et cetera that the hotels would have. And you're going to hear more about that from Lisa Carl. One other thing I want to point out is, you can see that we have 42% of the rooms in the suburban area, but we have market share of about 43%. And then, next slide. Another metric that we look at is called Revenue Per Available Room, which is the multiplier of the occupancy rate and the average daily rate. And if you look at the aggregate of the suburban counties and take the average, you look at about $79, but Montgomery County is coming in at about $83. So again, we continue to lead the region, we continue to lead the suburbs, and this is our forecasted numbers for 2025. So before I hand it over to Lisa Carl, I just want to say that, you know, the hospitality industry here in Montgomery County is something to be very proud of. And again, Lisa Carl, our Vice President of Sales.
Thank you, Jake. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. So yes, as the Vice President of Sales, I'll share some updates about our team. So our sales team works very closely with our 82 Montgomery County hotels to sell out our close to 10,000 hotel rooms throughout the county. So how do we do this? Well, we represent Montgomery County as the ideal sports, tourism, and meetings destination globally. So this year, our six-person sales team will participate in approximately 50 trade shows, traveling over 300,000 miles globally. So if you put that in perspective, that equates to about 12 times around the globe. So we are out there. We are aggressive and thrilled to represent Montgomery County as our destination. Currently, as Mike mentioned, our Director of Sales is in Berlin, and next week, John, our Director of Sports, will be in London. So why are we doing this? Well, our mission is to bring group business to our hotels while driving revenue to our restaurants, our shops, our attractions throughout Montgomery County to help Montgomery County prosper. So this year, our goal is to book over 150 events, and that will generate over $110 million in economic impact for Montgomery County. Last year, our hotel revenue grew by 4%, and this year, Montgomery County hotel room revenue is expected to grow an additional 3% to 280... hotel room revenue is expected to grow an additional 3% to $286 million. Last year... Excuse me. So when we look at our international business, we also anticipate that to grow this year. According to Tourism Economics, visitation will be up 17%, spend 13%, and hotel business 20%. So things are moving and growing. Next up, we have our medias and tourism business. It represents about 30% of what we manage within our tourism board. That consists mostly of our corporate religious and association business. And we're seeing domestic motor coach, also known as bus business, coming back. It's coming back strong. In fact, last month, we attended the Top Group Travel Show in North America called America Bus Association. It was in Philadelphia, brought in about over 3,000 attendees, and we had a very strong present there with a fresh new trade show booth, which included our Mini Cooper, all wrapped in America 250. And you can see it right here. So again, all of this is an effort to bring more bus business to Montgomery County. Lastly, be sure to mark your calendars. This is a little side note. This fall, the Navy and Marine Corps is going to be celebrating their 250th celebration, their birthdays. And we will be... They will be bringing over 300,000 attendees to our region. And of course, many of them are going to stay in our hotels, explore Valley Forge National Historical Park and other historical sites throughout the county. So now, when you see the Blue Angels flying up above, you'll know what's happening. You'll be in the know. So next up, to share more about our sports initiative, I'll introduce John Sheeran, our Director of Sports.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning Commissioners. I have the wonderful privilege to talk about everyone's favorite topic, sports. I mean, everyone loves sports right now. Maybe not Cowboys fans, but everyone else does. So going into it. So as you see on these numbers right here on the screen, these represent number of sports tourism across the country. But these numbers actually do not take into account professional sports. This is all youth, amateur collegiate, and some Olympic. So keep in mind that... So keep in mind when Rachel comes up here talking about the some things happening in 2026, this is separate to that, as we will also be having our own events in 2026 happen at the same time. It does keep you up at night, but in a good way because that means more success for Montgomery County. So as you see, 205 million families and individuals traveled the country last year in 2024 and spent a whopping $52 billion in spending, and which equated to $128 billion in economic impact. This industry also supported 750,000 jobs and generated over $20 billion in tax revenue. Overall, the industry is up 20% from 2019, and it's the best and growing industry with no sign of slowing down. Next slide. So what does that mean for Montgomery County in sports tourism? Well, it's booming here too. Over 72% of what our tourism board matches is sports business. And in 2024, we had our best year ever. We hosted over 100 different sporting events, generating over 100,000 room nights, and that produced $80 million in economic impact, which we are very proud that touched every part of the county. Yes, everywhere from Willow Grove to Cottahawk and the KLP, up to Oaks and all the way up to Pottstown. So why is Montgomery County becoming a premier sports destination? And why are your numbers growing? That's because we are getting our... The families and individuals coming here to fall in love with Montgomery County. We are a welcoming county. We are family friendly. And when they come here and the game is over, we have everything they want to do and more. And in 2025, we are expected to keep growing. Next slide. So starting in May, it's going to be our highest revenue generating month in the year. Over 14% increase. And what's happening is the perfect storm of special events and sports events. As you see up there, we will start off the month with some Big East Conference Championships, both for lacrosse and softball. Then mid-month, we have our premiere event, the PGA Truist Championship at the Philadelphia Cricket Club. It will bring in 40,000 visitors over five days. If that was not enough, over the same weekend, we have a national basketball tournament at Oaks Expo Center that will also touch up to the upper parts of the county. As we continue on with the month and getting close to the end, we then bring in a national flag football tournament. Flag football is a national tournament, is a national sport now. That tournament alone brings in people from 36 different states and four different countries. And then we wrap up the month with our annual big soccer tournament that crossed the region with sideline soccer. It's over Memorial Day weekend, and they invite 800 teams. As you can see, our sports team is very, very busy. We run on caffeine and passion. So speaking of soccer, next slide, please. We are happy to announce that we are welcoming back the President's Cup. This was our... This is the largest... We expect this to be the largest sporting event of the year. We originally hosted this back in 2023 for the first time. It left its original location after 15 years, so all eyes were on us in 2023, and we absolutely crushed it. So they wanted to come back here in 2025 and make it even bigger. This event alone will produce 7,000 hotel room nights and expected to bring in $6.5 million in economic impact. So as I close up, I told you, I said that every part of the county is being touched by sports, so I wanted to highlight Pottstown. Next slide, please. Pottstown is going to be hosting two large, huge sporting events this summer, first up being the Pottstown Rumble. That has now become the largest 2V2 volleyball tournament in the country. Kenny's team has done an amazing job growing this event, and we'd be loving to be great supporters. For Eagles fans out there, I can say now, Super Bowl winning champion Landon Dixon actually attended with his wife last year because she played in the pro division. And then finally, we are happy to announce that with partnership of Trilogy Park and the Nappers, we put a bid in for the USA BMX Nationals, and we are awarding that bid for 2025 in August. So we look forward to bringing in over 1,500 riders and families to the Pottstown area. So as you can see, sports is growing. It's very exciting, and we appreciate all your support. And with that being said, I'd like to invite up Rachel Riley, our VP of Marketing.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you Commissioners. Do we have you fired up about tourism yet? Because if we don't, I'm going to fire you. And don't worry, I am the last one. We are almost done. As the official destination marketing organization for Montgomery County, we like to do things just a little bit differently. And we use data so that we can target drivable markets such as New York and New Jersey to emotionally connect with consumers with our affordable, family-friendly messaging. For this year, we're showcasing how long winter weekends and less daylight can actually mean more family time. We're pushing golf and highlighting the PGA Truist Championship that is selling out at the Philly Cricket. We'll have our most robust summer campaign ever with an emphasis on Monco's hands-on activities that can help you put your phone down and unplug. And we will also have a first-ever focus on fall. And on the next slide, you'll see with the upcoming America 250th, we've got to approach marketing in a really different way this year because we have to look at two years at a time. We're planning this year, but also for '26. To maximize Monco's impact with all these regional events coming in, we have to plan around each large-scale sporting event and bring in specific things to tie to that. So for example, we're looking at the PGA Tour, and we're bringing in high-profile entertainment that will be coming in to serve the clientele for that event. We're also working on a commemorative visitors guide with an artist commission collective cover and different language translations, a history video, historic roundtables and town talks to educate and inform our community about our Monco history past, our overseas marketing. We're going to be targeting World Cup countries, and supporting and celebrating Valley Forge Park's 50th Federal Park Anniversary. It's the only park in the National Park Service whose birthday is on July 4th, so that'll be pretty exciting in 2026. The key here is we need to capitalize on this global attention for awareness to get visitors to want to return to Valley Forge and Monco specifically in '27 and '28 to tie to our historic milestones. I always like to say, we can't take away from the fact that our country was born in Philadelphia. But we declared our independence, and then we had to fight for it. That's where Valley Forge and the American Revolution ties come in. On the next slide, you'll see all of this is to drive more than 2 million page views to our website, which we're completely redesigning and relaunching this summer. You can see a little tease up there of our itinerary builder. We're going to invite visitors to choose their own adventure. It's an incredible tool the team's really excited about based on traction we've seen for this type of content. And then we're keeping the arts alive in Monco, as you'll see on the next slide, by promoting dozens of cultural locations on our Arts Monco Pass, and we're bringing back our fourth annual Jazz Month in September. Just a few notes about this event. We're adding more days, so we're expanding because the... This event just keeps growing. From our first to second year, we doubled, and then second to third year, tripled our participation in a variety of venues and towns all across the county. Our theme this year will be community, and we're working to support a local nonprofit as well as still put a strong spotlight on women in this genre. All of these initiatives help Monco stand out in the news, as you'll see on the next slide. This year, we anticipate national coverage with stories like the PGA Truist, of course, as well as Edely and Netflix House coming to the King of Prussia Mall. We're also going to see an... We're anticipating an expected increase in media interest for the semi-quartet. So we're planning on that with our park partners. For social, on the next slide, you'll see we're capitalizing on our 250,000 following by continuing to engage with key influencer and content partnerships. So for example, you'll see the short-form video there. That's actually the Biscuit Lady in Plymouth meeting. If you have not been, you need to go, like today, right now. It's so delicious, so good. And it's also women-owned, which is pretty cool. We're also working with more niche content creators. We're exploring new platforms and AI, but we have to keep that authenticity in there. Also, user-generated content, and then staying on top of trends like the Eagles, of course. We are expanding. You'll see on the next slide, our visitor services digital kiosk presence beyond Valley Forge Park to two of our other most visited sites in the county, the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center at Oaks and the Almond Park Zoo in Norristown. These are going to highlight new marketing capabilities. As you can see up there, folks will be able to take photos. There's a photo booth option, and we'll be able to collect more data, which will tell us about the visitors coming to Montgomery County. Plus, we also stock our publications right here at the county courthouse... courthouse, excuse me, in the jury duty room now. And then we want to leave you with a couple of our community efforts. So the first one up you'll see is our Rev Run. Registrations are pacing really nicely, as you can see, for our five-mile run and two-mile walk at Valley Forge National Historical Park in April. We will end up with just shy of about 1,300 participants. Our goal, as Mike mentioned, is to present another record check to the park for $90,000 to support tourism improvement projects such as wayfinding signage that they're getting ready for next year for '26. And that will bring our total lifetime contribution to almost $800,000. You can also see brand-new shirts and hats that will be given out to some of the prize winners, as well as on the far right there, that is an original artwork commissioned piece that will serve as a nice takeaway for top winners and sponsors. And then last fall, on the next slide, you'll see we contributed our largest amount ever to the Monco Anti-Hunger Network through our Freedom From Hunger Drive. This brings us to more than 430,000 pounds of food lifetime. We're committed to continuing to help county pantries that keep seeing an increase in need with an all-time record goal to help get us over 600,000 pounds this year. This is about embedding ourselves and our partner businesses in the community to serve those in need, because if we all just pitch in just a little bit more, we can make this burden so much lighter. And then speaking of community, we wanted to end on a little bit of a high note. Sorry, we couldn't resist the bragging rights. Thank you so much to the county for letting us help with that pep rally. What a fun event and, I mean, the bonus that they won, right? Thanks for coming out in the cold. We do have a few swag bags for the Commissioners that I will bring up for you. Otherwise, I'm going to pass it back to Mike to answer any questions.
Well, again, thank you Commissioners. Great to be here. Any questions?
Do you need somebody to drive that Cooper around the... Mini Cooper around the county?
It's amazing how many people see that Cooper.
Just throwing it out there.
It's very visible, so, yeah.
I'll just say thank you for doing a great job. And I really appreciate that you bring your whole team into the presentation as well and highlight their work because, I mean, you can just tell by the numbers, the level of economic activity that we generate through tourism in Montgomery County is enormous, and that is real jobs. It affects, you know, real people's lives here in Montgomery County. So when we see the trajectory that we do, it's a great sign for the whole community. And my son will be very excited to play with that mascot, Monty.
Monty.
Thank you, Mike, for your leadership and always bringing fun into the boardroom. And you have an amazing team, so look forward to continuing to work with you and celebrating all the great work that you all are doing.
Just, you know, thank you. Great job, as usual. Guys are amazing for everything that you're doing. And, you know, when you live in Montgomery County, sometimes you don't realize how much is actually going on throughout Montgomery County. So when it's... It makes so much sense how much... How many people come here, you know, on a daily basis or weekly basis for all the different types of activities that, you know, are spread out through the county. So it's just really... It's a great place to live. It's a great place to visit. And you guys do an amazing job continually promoting the county. Quick question. When it was talking about the... I thought I heard it was that one event that you guys were at, the expanding bus service, or what was that?
Yeah. So if you remember, before the pandemic hit, the motor coach industry was on a real down decline in general throughout the whole country. Back in the day, 20 years ago, you would see a lot of motor coach buses at the King of Prussia Mall, at the Valley Forge National Park, out of Pottstown. That business was pretty stale. And now, post-COVID, that industry is banging. It is growing quick. And we know for '26, you're going... I'm going to see an enormous amount of motor coach buses. The challenge with '26, and we'll update the Commissioners when we come back, is transportation, as Eli I'm sure has told you too. It's transportation as a whole. It's something that the entire region is losing sleep about right now, when you look at the schedule. But motor coach is... At the conference that we were at, our team, they put a stat up, I think, two years ago, there was, let's say, 700 motor coach, like, the over-the-top ones, few hundred thousand dollar buses, built. This year, there's 1,700 being built in the country. That's how big that industry is growing. That's what, you know, Wi-Fi and everything on the buses and all that stuff. So we're going to see a lot of that. And the America 250 momentum for us is just over the top. People will retreat to Montgomery County. That's our law. They're going to retreat. They're going to come out here, and they're going to spend a lot of money. So we're excited. Thank you again. We appreciate everything you do for us.
I'm just going to take a two-minute break, and we'll be back in just a moment. Cheers.[438.62]
It's not a, it's not a John Deere type mower that you see at Home Depot or Lowe's. It's, it's a full tractor that's used throughout cutting the large field parcels that the county owns. So it's not a, like I said, it's not, it's forty thousand, whatever was forty seven thousand would, seems high, but for what the piece of equipment that is being purchased by the county for use of cutting throughout Montgomery County is, it's not, it's not a very high cost. The first one you mentioned about the meeting software or the agenda software. I asked, I asked that same question myself, like why, what are we doing, what is this? And as we, as I got a better further explanation, unfortunately, you can't get, provide all the details on every agenda item. The document would be sixty pages long, but that is, it's more than just creating agendas. It's, it's more like a document management software that will tie the agenda to resolutions, the votes to the resolutions and all that. So it's a little bit more sophisticated than just creating public agendas. So I did look into that. And then what was the other one that you mentioned?
Those are the public relations costs.
Well, that, yeah, but that's, that, that's the public relations, that the county's always had that in place. And it's only, it's only as needed, and hopefully we won't need it. But usually, stuff like that kicks in when there's something very drastic going on in the county that, you know, we have to also have professionals, outside professional helper. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned about that. What was the other one? But that was the third, right?
Dark connectivity, I'm interested in what that means. Dark fiber connectivity?
Yeah, that, that, that's not an unreal, I, I understand what you're saying, but that's not, it's, that's not, that costs isn't in alignment with, with budget of the fiber network that we're doing. So I, I looked at all of those.
Any other comments?
Barbara Furman?
Yeah, unless it's about one of these contracts or votes. Anything else? Okay, that's it. All right, so we will move on to approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February twentieth, twenty five minutes of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to section G, Resolutions. Scott France will be presenting the first one.
Thank you and good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we have a resolution to authorize the extension of the Scofield River Passenger Rail Authority. The SRPRA, as we call it, was formally created in June two thousand twenty-two to formally advance and study the restoration of passenger rail between Redding and Philadelphia with Key Anchor Station in Pottstown and potentially Norristown as well. And so that was, again, created in two thousand twenty-two. When that was created, the three counties who are, make up that authority, Berks, Chester, and Montgomery, voluntarily decided to put in a clause that required reauthorization or extension three years out. And the purpose was to, you know, for public transparency, to make sure everyone was taking a second look and not just continuing momentum, making sure we had the rationale and the reasoning for, for continuing the effort. When you establish an authority in, under Pennsylvania law, it is set as a default for fifty years. So while that was the, you know, the state law, again, this was a self-imposed clause to make sure that everyone was on the same page. So in December, we heard from the executive director here in this room, Tom Fraley, to report back. We are in what I think is a very good place with that board, with that activity. We're in the Federal Rail Administration's Quarter ID Program, which is the gatekeeper for the federal funding that supports this effort determining if rail service truly is feasible and can be implemented. And that's funded right now up to a hundred percent federally and then ninety percent in the next phase, which we're anxiously awaiting getting passage in within the next couple of months. So with this action, Chester and Berks have already approved during their most recent county commissioner meetings. So with our approval today, we would make the third and final commitment to continuing the board. And I just want to emphasize that even though, yes, by Pennsylvania law, it authorizes it for fifty years, we built into the bylaws that each county has to approve by voting, has to be represented. And we each have three members on the board, one of which is Tom DiBello, Commissioner DiBello, myself, and Mayor Stephanie Hendrick from Pottstown. So without our support, obviously, we, we can at any time or any county can decide that they would no longer want to participate. And that is, I think, an effective relief valve if it were needed. So with that, I'll answer any questions and the resolution for you.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution One as described by Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Is there any board comment?
I just want to, I think I mentioned this last month when, when Tom Fraley was here, but this, we're actually getting ready to move into the second phase, which a lot of it's going to be feasibility studies. And that will determine what, what we do beyond that, if anything. So this is actually an important step to make a determination on what, you know, what would, what the future would look like if this project continues down the, down the road. So I'm anxious to get into that phase.
No, I, I would share the same sentiment and just think this is a very important project for the region and glad we've come together to continue supporting it. Okay, so moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Second resolution is to make a staff appointment to our suburban transit network. And I'll make the motion to appoint Matthew Popack to the suburban transit network. Is there a second?
No second, Bob.
That's, any board comment? And just to clarify, the motion is to approve Resolution Two as described in Exhibit G two. Any comment, Bob? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes. Moving on to the appointments for the Montgomery County Soil Conservation District. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Three as described on Exhibit G three. Is there a second?
No second, Bob.
Second, any board comment?
I'd like to amend the motion to reappoint Mike Connor instead of appointing Dan Lurie to Montgomery County Soil Conservation District. Mike Connor's been on the Conservation District. He's a local farmer. He has a lot of respect within the farmer, farming community. And one of the things that I've, that he's doing on his farm is taking a progressive approach to crop rotation. Normally, at the end of farming season, farmers will go in, they cut, they clearcut their fields. And then in the springtime, they'll go back and they'll till their fields to get ready for planting the next crop or the same, it depends on their crop rotation schedule. And they're doing something at that farm that I found very impressive of.
Do you want, oh, sorry, just, you made the motion, so it's got to be seconded.
Well, no, but I'm just, I'm just.
It's got to either be.
Right, but I'm just, I just wanted to have a second.
I think the way we should handle it is either A, you could move to divide the question, which is not debatable, and then if you have a second, we could split the, split the, split the votes. Or you can move to amend, and if there's no second, then.
Right, right.
Or you can comment.
Yeah, all right.
So is there, so the, what was your motion, what was your amendment?
I just amended motion to reappoint Mike Connor instead of appointing Dan Lurie.
Okay, so that would be amending the, we've been. Looking at our, that would be changing the motion, right?
That would be amending the, seeking amendment to the motion you made to substitute, I'm sorry, what is the name of Commissioner DiBello?
Mike Connor.
Mike Connor for Dan Lurie. That leaves the rest of the full motion to pass.
Okay, so that would either be a friendly amendment, need to be a friendly amendment or seconded by?
That would need to be amended, that would be seconded.
Okay, so is there a second? Okay, so there's no second on that. So the original motion is still seconded, and now we'll move to board comment.
Well, I'm not going to repeat everything I said, but I was just, at the end, what I'm always going to finish with is that with his crop rotation, they, has a, they, they don't actually till the fields. They plant a different type of plants and growth over the winter that's actually used for feed. And then in the springtime, it has, the, the fields are prepped and ready to, they're ready to plant the new season without actually tilling the field, which has less of an impact on the soil. So from a soil conservation, it's, it's an amazing thing that they're doing out there, and they're actually leading the effort and hopefully see it expand throughout the state and beyond.
So look, I have no doubts that current board members, past board members have made important contributions. I think it's part of our role, however, as commissioners to, you know, consider new people and get them a chance to serve. And so I think that's, you know, that's something that's a priority for me. And, and I think everything I understand about Dan Lurie is he'll have many contributions to make as well. Okay, so moving on to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oh.
So the motion passes. So moving on to appointment for the Montgomery County College Board of Trustees. I will make a motion to appoint Erin Boyle as per Resolution Number Four described on Exhibit G four. Is there a second?
No second, Bob.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any good comment? One, so Erin Boyle has extensive experience in the public sector and in advising public entities in the private sector. I think she brings a great set of perspectives and leadership skills that are going to be really essential for the community college as they tackle, you know, doing the, the great initiatives that they're, they're seeking to accomplish this year and in the years to come.
And I'll just say, I've had the pleasure of meeting Erin several, several times and seeing her body of work and her care for this community. Look forward to, I see Terry Riley, one of our trustees from the community college in the, in the audience. I think she'll be a great addition to the work that we're doing as trustees. So look forward to when we vote, to welcoming Erin.
Got it. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, so we will move on to Anthony Brew, who will give us the personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Commissioning Department's personnel list. This is a three-page document dated March fifth, two thousand twenty-five, with the timestamp of two forty-six P M. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the March sixth, twenty twenty-five presentational presentation as given by Mr. Anthony, Tony, what do you want me to say?
Tony.
Is there a second?
No second, Bob.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That was easy. Welcome again to your first meeting, thank you. Moving on to the advertisement of bids and RFPs under Exhibit A. I'll make a motion to approve the advertisements for bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to section J, Awards of Contract, Exhibit B. I'll make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
No second, Bob.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Final set of contracts. Now to section K, Awards of Contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force under Exhibit C. I'll make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Renewal Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, okay. Any general public commenters?
Barbara Furman?
Sorry, what was that? Barbara Furman?
Hello, Barbara Furman, New Hanover Township. In the earlier years of the pandemic, I first heard about Your Way Home at a school district in western Montgomery County. This was an organization that Commissioner McKeisha highlighted earlier. They were soliciting fundraising through a club activity that was, had some LGBTQ activities. I'm not making question on that. It was just, they were, they were asking for fundraising from organizations. I researched on the Monco website on Your Way Home and discovered that this organization did a local survey in two thousand nineteen for almost a year. They were putting surveys in coffee shops around Narst, the Narstown area. They reported ninety-three percent of those surveys, surveyed that were experiencing home and food insecurity questioned their gender. That number sounds impactful. When I drilled down into the survey, it included forty-three participants in this county of over eighty, eight hundred thousand. That's actually thirty-nine actual people surveyed that said that. They tried to in-person survey those same people, and two people agreed, but they only personally surveyed one person. So yes, homelessness is an issue that we absolutely address and be compassionate about. However, Your Way Home may have more than just the homelessness agenda in mind. That survey research was on the website for almost a year, but it, I cannot find it anymore. I would like you to do some further research into that survey from February two thousand nineteen to December two thousand nineteen. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'll just respond briefly, which is that it's, it's well documented, not just in Montgomery County, but elsewhere in the country and nationally, I'm sure even further than that, that there are disproportionate share of LGBT youth in particular who experience homelessness. And the tragic reason that's the case is because when many young people come out, they're not always accepted by their family members. And it's absolutely critical that we provide services to homeless youth because they don't deserve to sleep on the streets because of who they are. And I think that should absolutely be a commitment in our work in Your Way Home, ensuring that there are safe spaces for LGBT youth in this county.
Just point of, point of privilege. So Your Way Home is our, like, umbrella organization, right? Where a wide range of services that we provide on housing fall under. So I would like to just clarify, you know, the organization that you're, you're talking about. But I would also say, I think all three of us have been on the streets and we've seen the homelessness that exists in Montgomery County, like, live and in the flesh. And so the work that we're doing and approving, at least this administration, is because there are concrete examples of all types of people, not just, you know, those that might be part of the LGBTQ community, our seniors, children, you know, married couples, people that have struggled with substance use and mental health. So I think, you know, it's not until you see it, right, firsthand, do you truly understand why we're making the investments that we're making, so.
I'll add one piece to that, which is veterans, of course.
Veterans, yep.
So also disproportionately affected. And we specifically need services that speak to veterans directly, who speak to their experience, who can help and support them. And that's why we have really one of the first-of-its-kind Veterans Response Team in terms of mental health. And programs that's, that address the needs of a particular community are necessary for us to succeed to help all of those affected by homelessness. Any other comments? Are there any other public comments, too?
Elton Fernandez?
Go ahead.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Edel Fernandez, residente en Norristown, inmigrante, miembro de la organización nonprofit Unides para servir en Norristown.
Good morning. His name is Edel Fernandez, resident of Norristown and member of the nonprofit organization Unides para servir.
Queremos pedirle a ustedes, señores comisionados, que se haga vetiada un welcome act a favor de los inmigrantes de Montgomery County.
We would like to ask, to respectfully ask you resolution, no, not a resolution, a welcoming act in favor of all the immigrant communities in Montgomery County.
Reconocemos y valoramos los avances que el condado ha realizado en beneficio de nuestra comunidad inmigrante.
We value the progress that the county has made on behalf of our immigrant community.
Pero creemos firmemente que una talla de bienvenida enviaría un mensaje poderoso de inclusión, respeto y seguridad.
We firmly, firmly believe that a welcoming act will send a powerful message of inclusion, respect, and security.
No se trata solo de palabras, sino de un compromiso real que permitirá a miles de familias vivir con mayor tranquilidad y contribuirá aún más al bienestar de nuestro condado.
It is not only about the words, but about a real commitment, allowing many families to live with tranquility and able to contribute more to the well-being of our county.
Un condado que da la bienvenida a sus inmigrantes es un condado más fuerte, próspero y unido.
A county that welcomes immigrants is a county more stronger.
Les pedimos que en este paso histórico y reafirmen su compromiso con los valores de diversidad y equidad.
We respectfully ask to take this historic step and reaffirm your commitment with the values of the diversity, equity that represent Montgomery County.
Gracias por su tiempo y escucharla a vos de nuestra comunidad.
Thank you so much for your time and for listening to the voice of the community.
So I'll just say, thank you for being here, thank you for your work. And Montgomery County would not be the county that we are today and all of the successes that we heard about earlier if it were not for our immigrant communities, our immigrant population. And we have nearly a hundred thousand people who are immigrants in Montgomery County. We want to do everything we can to make sure that they are included and welcomed and supported in the ways that they should be. So I hope you saw, we recently hired our first-ever Director of Immigrant Affairs, Nellie Arval Jimenez from Alclamo in Norristown. And she's someone who's worked in immigration and in, in immigrant communities and providing services for decades. And someone with that expertise, I think, will give us an assessment of what we as a county can do better to ensure that we're including everyone and serving every community. But certainly, we are a welcoming place, and we would not succeed if we were not a welcoming county. And obviously, there are concerns, given what's happening federally. And I don't want to provide any assurances in regard to immigration enforcement because we don't have control over that. And so we can't falsely give people a sense of security where I know some people who were legal, you know, months ago with a temporary protected status or DACA may not be legal, you know, in terms of their presence. So that's concerning, I know, for many families. But we'll do everything we can in terms of our own actions to make sure that people are welcome in our county while respecting that we can advocate at the federal level, but we can't control the policies.
I would just, I'll just say, thank you for having the courage to come here and, and, and address this, this board. It's heartbreaking to see what immigrant communities are facing throughout this country. And, you know, I'm really proud of Montgomery County for staying true to our values and making sure that we make Montgomery County an inclusive place to live. And I, like Commissioner McKeisha shared, just been, been thinking about ways that we can show up in action to show our commitment to our immigrant community. And it's, you know, there, there are a lot of complexities there. But I want the immigrant community across Montgomery County to know that we, behind the scenes, are thinking about new, different expedited ways to, to support the community. So, and it doesn't matter, you know, where you come from. You know, I told the story about, like, Montella, Italy. There's, there's a large Italian immigrant population here in Narstown, right? To the people that I've, I've had the pleasure of meeting, the Hispanic, the Latino community in Narstown. So I just want to just applaud you for having the courage to come out and, and speak. And I'm, I'm sorry for what our immigrant communities are, are going through at this point.
David Morgan?
David Morgan of Ambor. I'd like to mention about the revenue from real estate that is stretching the real estate owners and those who have renting situations. Increased spending causes pressure on them for the rent. So, and then again, businesses have to face five years of tax increases, the latest one being almost ten percent, I would calculate, fifty-two percent. And the, besides the historic skyrocket of the first line, which you see in your tax bills coming out this time in spring, you have a record of always two-to-one votes. It's always Democratic Party votes, two-to-one for raising taxes. It's always Republican vote against raising taxes to save us money. That's a fact. Then I noticed a couple of others, change the subject more about personal things. One person in the lower quadrant had mentioned that they're concerned about speeding and that radar enforcement is apparently not available to local policemen. So they said, would you tell the commissioners, whatever you can advocate to the state to encourage enforcement? Because they try late at night, it's kind of hard to read lines in the road, and it's just doing the line process is difficult. So because speeding risks lives, so maybe consider what the commissioners can do in advocacy. I think we might be the only state with no radar for the local police. Then another thing I want to mention is I looked at the report here, and it said, mentioned in the two thousand twenty-five implementation update, it said on the page, the goal of encouraging collaboration, page three, there's enabled training for and certification of seven new community dualists in partnership with community organizations to support Black and African-American birthing people and families during, before, during, and after childbirth, which I think is wonderful. But I was wondering, is this replacing Monco Mamas? Because there was no presentation for Monco Mamas last year. I know that you've spoken, Mr. DiBello, you spoke, Commissioner DiBello, you spoke about adoption being very important for young families. But Monco Mamas has been a great program. I'm not sure if it's existing anymore. So any information on that would be good to know. I've advocated for that and for Pregnancy Abuse Resource Centers helping these little ones, these most vulnerable, as I would see them, to have successful births and lives with their mothers and fathers. So then, I think if we can then just think of the needs of everyone with the taxes pressures and helping people to be successful with starting young families is really great, which the commissioners consider. And I'm going to speak at the salary board about the new positions, because there's a lot of them. And after two-point-two million worth of, of that going on, which in the January ninth meeting, I'll bring that up more with another meeting of expense we have to face.
Any other comments?
I just, I want to make.
You have one?
I just want to comment on that. I, I thank you for your comments, Mr. Morgan. I don't, I'm not going to attest to what previous boards did or didn't do and how the vote broke, the votes broke down over the years. I don't vote party politics. I vote for what I think is the best thing for Montgomery County. Last year, I did not support the budget. I had, I laid out specific reasons why I didn't support the budget. I was very clear. But it had nothing to do with. But it had nothing to do with party politics. And it wasn't me versus them, and it's not a party, one party versus another party. So again, I appreciate you pointing that out, but I don't do that. I will never do that. And like I said, I was very vocal last year as far as why I didn't support certain things. And, and I will continue to do that when I'm not in alignment with something, I will specifically state why I don't believe I could support or will be voting for, but it has nothing to do with, with party politics. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I'll just add, as I said earlier, the, the structure of taxation is determined by the state government, right? And you want to make a partisan argument, Mr. Morgan, but school boards that have Republicans, including when Commissioner DeBello was on the school board, they raise taxes all the time because they have to, because, because the revenue does not go up automatically over time with this form of taxation, whereas it does on income taxes or sales taxes or other forms. So if you were to be advocating for a change to prevent the rise in property taxes with the, the actual amount people are paying, it has to happen at the state level. Because we're just, we have our hands tied. As, as you'll see, many Republicans vote for tax raises at the township level, at the school board level, because it costs money to operate schools and local government, and those requirements naturally go up over time. Go ahead. Any other commenters? We have one over here. Go ahead. You are? Yeah, yeah. For the people on Zoom.
It's really quick. This goes back to the thing about the soil. And I just wanted to know what, oh, by the way, I'm artist Lucans in Plymouth Township. I just wanted to know what Dan Laurie's, what, what, what he, what he brings to the table for soil enhancement. If we have a farmer that's practicing regenerative and restorative farming already in the township, is it possible for them to work together instead of picking one or the other? Why not use both of them if Mr. Laurie's credentials are in restorative and regenerative farming and soil techniques? Because we all know, the healthier your soil is, the more production you have.
Yeah. Any other comments? Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to share with you his credentials. He's also a farmer. This is a farmer's seat.
Okay.
And I generally don't get into comparing individuals' credentials in a public board meeting, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to share.
Okay.
Further with you. Any other comments? Okay, great. So our upcoming meeting is Thursday, March 20th, 2025, at 10:00 AM in the board room here. And we look forward to seeing everyone. Then we also have another one coming up, which I don't know if I should publicize yet in April. Megan, what do you think? Should I publicize the April meeting? So that one will be taking place in Lower Mary Township on April 3rd, 6:00 PM, which is in the evening. So we've done this a number of times, and we've had our public meeting near where Commissioner DeBello lives, and now we get one where I live, so I have a shorter commute. And then we're always here.
We're on E-Smart.
Great. So any closing comments? Nope. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the March 6, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to Salary Board, joined by our Controller, Bob Hart. And we're getting public comment on that.
I noticed in the January 9th meeting of the Commissioners, this Salary Board, that there were all these new positions, new positions, and they could cost over $100,000 each plus benefits and pension. So when we're finding that was brought up, it was wondering, what are, Commissioner DeBello was asking, what are the job descriptions for all these positions? And so there are five solicitor positions to be added. There's a sustainability, a community engagement, external events, director of policy, and policy assistant. So with all that spending, I know we're thinking about revenue from the state controlling it, but we have a spending problem, I see, as in addition to the fact that on the July 18th meeting, I looked this up, there were 35 law firms for outside legal counsel in exhibit B, number 17. So with all that legal help, it seems like the county's really investing a lot in legal help, and I'm not sure how much was spent that year with the 35 law firms. But I'm concerned as a citizen for all other citizens who have to pay taxes and seeing when the expenditure side just seems to be so extremely high, I gave analogy of rockets, with our line A of our current tax bills are coming out over time. It's not just one snapshot, well, here's 9%. We've had 5, 8, 8, 13, almost 10% in our tax increases. So that's pretty serious for a lot of people and budgets. So that's why I'm bringing up high spending for positions. I didn't even get into the other things which don't apply now, because this is salary.
So if we had a policy director, I could better answer your question of whether we were overspending or not. I'll, I'll just comment. All these positions are pretty essential positions for a government with a $600 million operating budget and a $1.2 billion all-in budget with the capital budget. So I think, you know, 0.3%, I think this is 0.3% of the budget is what you're talking about, is natural. And in terms of cost savings, I hope you saw that we created a new office, the Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance, which is dedicated to finding not just efficiencies and cost savings, but how do we better deliver services for all of our residents equitably. That's going to be a major focus of this year and how we find savings across the board and how we better deliver services. So we're absolutely committed to doing that across the board, including analyzing outside contracts, which in many cases are essential, I mean, are absolutely essential to the function of the government. Anybody got anything else? No. Okay. So I will bring up Tony. Sorry, one second. For the presentation of the Salary Board list, Tony Brew.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. This is a four-page document dated March 5, 2025, with a timestamp of 2:46 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and, and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the March 6, 2025, Salary Board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, our head of HR. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. Great. I'll make a motion to adjourn the March 6, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. See you soon. See you next time. Thanks for being here.[1753.58]